Drive some lunch.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody's called the order? Item four.
Our motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
My Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item four to recess the commissioners' meeting, set salary board. All in favor?
Aye. Go ahead, number three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 14.
Okay, I wish my Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, could minutes the October 14th meeting. Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Item four.
Motion to approve item number four is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item four on the agenda, eliminate the position of the 9-1-1 Systems Manager. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Motion to approve item number five is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco.
Wait a minute, no, wait a minute. It says effective November 25, 2016.
Well, that's what the first one said, but I thought that was a mine period to give it opportunity. Is that a typo?
Yeah, it's a typo. Should be November 25, 2015.
No, no, no.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
The first one, the one you made it, number four is correct.
Four is correct.
2016 is...
Next month.
Yeah.
Right. That position gets eliminated next month, January 1st.
Of 2016?
Yes.
Okay, what about five?
Five, it gets eliminated November 25th.
Of what year?
This year.
Today.
Today.
Oh.
According to your agenda, it's today is November 26, but you know.
Okay.
Okay, so it should say the 25th. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number six with the change of 2015.
We got the date right?
Yep, sure. 2015.
Second.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to eliminate maintenance full-time position effective today. Questions or comments?
Are these, I'm sorry, are these positions currently filled by?
No, they're all vacant positions.
Okay, thank you.
These two, five and six there.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda. Looks like the date on that one's right.
Date on that one's right.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item seven, eliminate position of clerk typist part-time in registry and recorder's. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eight with the change of 2015.
Yeah, second.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to eliminate position of clerk typist, full-time domestications. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. While we're on eliminating these positions, what about the juvenile probation?
It's not, it's not budgeted and it's not listed anymore. I don't know whatever happened to it, but it's not.
But it never got eliminated. It is still an available...
Not available because it's not budgeted. So you can elim, you make a motion to eliminate it.
I make a motion to eliminate the open juvenile probation officer position effective November 25, 2015.
I'll second.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to eliminate the open juvenile probation position effective November 25, 2015. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, go ahead and let's see.
What is a full-time department of public? What's that?
That replaces the individual that was in number four.
And what were we paying the individual in item number four?
Hmm, it was like 12, I don't know, 1280 or something like that.
Well, I see it's a union position, so it'd have to go by a contract.
Right, right.
So I guess it would have to be what the starting position is under...
Well, while we are creating a new position, so we create the start rate for the new position.
And we're paying the old position $12.80.
Right, but this position, the new position's going to expand and do more than what the old position did.
Okay, so you guys already got an idea how much we're going to pay them?
Well, I would recommend, I would recommend grade 19, which is 1628 an hour.
Whoa.
That comes out to about 33 a year for a technical person.
It's got to be by the hour, not salary, right?
By the hour, yeah, that's why I'm grading 19.
Wow, that sounds like a lot of money.
Not for a technical person.
What's a Democrat say?
I don't, um, I haven't seen a grid or anything, so I don't really know. What's it compared to, to people working down in 9-1?
You have to look at the county.
Has there been a salary, well, we can't do a salary range because of the...
No, you can't do salary range.
Well, that was easy if we could.
Well, you're...
I don't know what the contract is. We'd have to start about what the...
There is no start rate in the contract for this. It's whatever we establish becomes a start rate.
What do you, what, you want 33, so how much an hour is that?
It's 1628 an hour. That's grade 19.
I would, how about we do, you mentioned 1280, 1280 for the first six months, move to year after six months. Does that make sense?
I don't know if we can do that with a union position. That's one of the issues we got right now.
Should we table this until we figure that out, bring it up next meeting? Or is this something that needs to be filled? Here's what I don't want to do. I don't want to do it wrong and then find out we need to redo it.
Right. I know that we can't take and, we cannot take and have a start rate and then give them an increase in six months.
Well, that's after they're off probation.
Can't do it. That's what we got the jam up with right now.
Well, I don't want another jam up. That's why I'm babbling like I am, trying to...
You've got to set the rate and rate is what the rate is.
But it can be anything we say it is.
Right, but if you want a technical person, a person that can do programming, a person that can do IT work, now that's part of the problem we have now.
I don't know enough to agree to, I guess. What's our Democrat front say? Take me out of the loop, you two can come up with it and we're done.
Well, it makes it easy for you, right?
Well, I just want to get it right. I don't know as I can sit here and know what right is at this point.
I'm not really sure either.
You're not what?
I'm not sure that that's a...
Well, then that makes it easy. Motion to table it, we'll figure it out and bring it up next meeting. Right?
Do that.
I'll second that.
Item nine's tabled. Item ten.
Motion to approve item number 10. Listed on the agenda. We got all the dates right? Right here?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, are you gonna...
I'll make a motion to approve the holiday schedule.
Well, I just did that.
Okay, I'll second it then.
Bruce, Bruce, he has a question, like our holidays.
Are we moving, are we moving to the convention schedule?
Consentia.
The what?
The compens, consension schedule.
No, it's not. You mean compensation? Is that what you're trying to...
No, do you mean compensation?
We're on 10 still. We're still on 10, you're ahead of us. You got any issues with the holiday schedule?
I'm not getting paid either way.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. It should be the 2015, 16.
16.
That...
Prove the following, 2016 holiday schedule.
Where?
Well, mine says 2015. Right there.
We already did that.
Well, now we're on the miscellaneous schedule. I'm still on the holiday schedule.
All right, well...
All right, so now we're on 11.
And isn't that for 2016, not 15?
Well, this was, this is the current 2015 schedule. Do you want to approve the 2015 schedule being 2016, or do you want to make changes to it?
Well, we've, we approved the 2015 schedule a year ago. So I think what we're doing here is approving the 2016 miscellaneous compensation schedule.
Right, all right. So yes, we are.
Boy.
Do I make changes or do you want to do...
What am I doing today here?
I'd, I'd like to consider making changes to the, um, the judge of election, inspector, clerk, constable and deputy.
And what kind of changes?
For who? Where are you?
Right at the beginning.
What kind of change you want to make?
Yeah, what do you want to make?
I would like to consider, um, up to 150 voters, let me see, um, $140 instead of 151 to 500, 150 or, yeah, 150.
501 to 1,000.
Is 160. Over 1,000, 170. It's just a consideration. Those people arrive there at 6:30 in the morning and...
Look, they're all underpaid, but it's a public service to most of them, that they're happy to do, they like it.
And we can't fill those...
And we can't fill them, people don't want to do them, I don't disagree with you. That's true.
That's not the reason.
Well, I'm not going to squabble over 20 bucks. Because they do sit there all day long.
Well, what are you going to do with the clerk and the constable rates?
I have for the clerk $90 for the first one, 100 for the second one, 110 and 120.
And then do the same for the constable, right?
The constable and deputy constable.
People don't want to do them anymore.
And what is the reason they don't want to do it? Is it just monetary or something else?
Well, it used to be the elderly people enjoyed it sitting there for the day to catch up on what went on for the year, but there's not many young left anymore to do it.
What would you guys like to do? Do I have a motion to...
I'd like to make a motion, um, to approve what's there with the changes that were just stated for the 2016 compensation schedule.
I've got a motion with the changes, do you have a second?
Are we sure we got the changes just...
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll second it.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to approve with the changes. Questions or comments? Yes.
I'd like to see if you can approve the rate for jurors. It's $9 a day, and how long have we had the $9 a day in this county? And 17 cents a mile for them to travel. And how long has that been when we have...
I think that's set by...
Somebody said it was set by the court years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Can that be raised?
Set by the court.
Court has to decide it? Can you make a recommendation?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. Any public comment on the salary board?
Motion to close salary board and return the commissioners' meeting.
Second.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to close the meeting.
None, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're back to the...
9:14. Number five, you're up.
Number five.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five, listed on the agenda.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to approve item five, could minutes the last meeting, number 11. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item six on the agenda, approve the cash disbursement, electronic payments. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number seven is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item seven on the agenda, to approve or ratify the payments for December request. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number eight is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to approve item eight on the agenda, except with regret, resignation of Mike Betts, 9-1-17. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number nine is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that, I have a question. I was told that her resignation was dated December 31, 2015.
That was wrong. That was originally, but that, because then there's a lapse.
Okay.
She gets sworn in on January 4th.
All right, so if she resigns on January, it's effective the 4th?
Correct.
Okay, so she pick up her benefits starting January 1st from being the first deputy?
No, January 4th, that's why I suggested it get been done this way. The way that she was told she had to do it, January 31st if she resigned, what if she needed medical attention? What if she'd have no benefits? So she cannot have a lapse in her benefits from when she resigns from this to when she's sworn in.
Okay.
This is so there's continuity.
I understand that, but when do you pick up your vacation time and your personal days and...
Well, she's an elected official, she can have all she wants. Elected official, isn't that vacation time? You can get paid whether you show up or not.
I'm just saying, January 1st, she picks all this up, then resigns on the 4th, does she get paid out for that time that she earned, starting January 1st?
Oh, I see what you're saying. And you're saying once she starts the new year, that the moment she starts the new year, she gets a, a year's worth of sick time, vacation time?
She'll pick up her personal time.
I think she would.
So she'll be paid out?
Yeah, and I don't, I mean, that's time she earned, uh, that she has available to her that she could use in that year, but now she's an elected official when, you know, come and go as you please. There is no requirement that...
Okay, that there'll be a check paid out to her for whatever time?
I would say there would be.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to get...
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item nine, except with regret, the resignation of Michelle Estebrock, who registered in the recorder, effective January 4th. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 10 is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item 10 on the agenda, except with regret, the retirement of Connie Ritchie from registry and recorder's office, per the recommendation of Mary Ellen. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 11 is listed on your agenda.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to approve item 11 on the agenda, except the resignation, except the termination of Matthew Fisher from military affairs. Questions or comments? Yes.
Is that a personnel issue you can't discuss?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 12 is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item 12 on the agenda, except with regret, the resignation of Nicole Cotton from the jail, effective close of business December 7. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So move.
Make a motion to approve item number 13 is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to approve item 13 on the agenda, exonerate the tax code bureau for neglecting the length of taxes for associated properties and removing from the repository list. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 14 is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item 14 on the agenda, through the application of the Susskind County continuing, continuity of operations, continuity of government plan. Questions or comments? Yes.
What is that?
It's part of the emergency operations plan, just stating that if there's an issue here, um, how do we continue government in the, in the county? Where do we do it at? How do we handle everything?
If there's a contingency, such as what?
Well, let's say the building got, um, trucked down the hill and ran through the building, knocked the building out. You know, we lost power, building burnt down, something like that, how would we continue? If it was a natural disaster, man-made disaster, how would we handle continuation of government? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve item number 15 is listed on your agenda.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to approve item 15 on the agenda, sign the lease date in November 25, 2015, between Susskind County and Susskind County Conservation District. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve 16 is listed on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, to approve item 16 on the agenda, to sign the memorandum, I understand, between Susskind County and Penn State Extension beginning January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2016, with our contribution being $109,347. Questions or comments?
Is that the same as conservation? When you say Penn State Extension, are they connected?
No, it's two separate organizations.
Two separate groups?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Make a motion to approve item number 17 with the change of to reappoint.
Second.
Motion by Christian Warren, same by Christian Jean Greco, to approve item 17 on the agenda, reappoint Richard Ane to, Melford, to the library board for a term of two years. Questions or comments? Yes.
So are we kind of backdating this appointment to January 1, 2015?
No, it should be 2016.
I just do, 2016.
And this is a new appointment?
No, it's a reappointment.
It doesn't say re.
We already changed the motion to reappoint.
Oh, you did, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And most likely I've already made this motion.
No, that was a salary board.
Yeah, we did it, we did it in the last commissioners' meeting, so we don't need to do it here. Now we're up to 19.
Motion to approve 19.
I'll second that.
Motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Warren, set the mileage for the 2016 for Susskind County, as follows, 10.5 mils for the General Earl estate, uh, for, and general fund, and .33 mils for the library fund, and there will be a one mil equivalent reduction, which will be a credit from the Act 13 impact free, from the general fund for the 2016 tax year. Total mileage is 10.83, which has been the same for the last, I don't know, many years.
Four or five.
Four or five years. Questions or comments? Yes.
Can you estimate how much a mil actually is when you say one mil reduction?
About 840,000.
I know, but per person, what is it like?
Depends on, depends on what they have and how they're assessed and everything else.
Because it's like $30 a mil possibly, or, you know, somebody's taxes?
I wouldn't even dare to guess.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve 20 is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
You're still on there, Commissioner.
Motion, motion by Christian Jean Greco, same by Christian Hall, to reappoint the following to the Susskind County Conservation District, Jim Kessler, Farm Director. What?
I don't, I, I'm not sure that Jim Kessler, one of these is a public director, but I'm not really sure which one. Do you have the paperwork?
I think it's Raymond.
And the dates are incorrect. It should be January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2019. Why do they all come in as former? Okay, well, we're, well, we're only going to be appointing one then. They all came in as former, we need a public director. And the dates are incorrect, it should be January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2019, for former public directors, and mine should be January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2016. It's per year.
Well, why don't we just make Raymond the public director?
We got it right?
Yeah, we're going to change Raymond to the public director, and the dates for Jim Kessler and Raymond will be, uh, January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2019, and then Mary and Warren will be from January 1, 2016, through December 31, 2016.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to reflect the changes.
And I will, and I second to that. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I stand.
Okay, item 21. I'll keep going, we got another page here.
21? Ah, motion to approve item number 21. What am I on?
21, yeah.
Am I on the right?
Yeah, yeah.
It should be 2016.
Right, so that's got to be changed, and also the rate's got to be changed on all of the, uh...
What's all this stuff?
That's totally gone. I'm glad you're going to have an easy day today.
Thanksgiving, I thought there'd be two or three things here to do.
That's what you did last time, so...
Did we?
Yeah, made up for it. So that motion's to reflect what were the changes where in the salary board?
Yes, just have this reflected, what we did in the salary board.
Right.
I'll second you there.
Any questions or comments on item 21? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to open the sealed bids.
Let's start with the Ford 700. As listed as running.
Ford 700, right there. Where's the two envelopes that have nothing?
Right, right in front of you with the, we're sticking.
I need you to open these first.
First?
Because these don't have what they're for, so we have to figure out what they're for.
Can you second the motion to open them?
We'll second it.
I made the motion, nobody's seconded.
Okay, he's seconded. All in favor, aye, we're opening.
3,500 for 2007 Chevy Trailblazer.
I'm going to go with this one. Okay, see what that one is.
Smitty and Fredy, I refuse. Roll-off container, roll-off containers.
Okay, good. Okay, so do the 700.
Steven Utter, 2015, oh, 788. Steven...
How much?
Well, I'd say that's one thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
They said two thousand, that's what I had.
Did they say two thousand? I don't think so. Steven Utter.
So, the highest one is that one?
James Greenwood. Motion to award it, James Greenwood, for twenty-seven hundred dollars.
Second.
My question to Jim Greco, second my question to Warren, to award the F seven hundred to James Greenwood, for the highest bidder, twenty-seven hundred. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Two thousand and nine Chevy Tahoe. Wow, we got a lot of, must be worth a lot of money.
You pay your salaries, so, at least I have no stick budget.
R H L, eleven thousand nine fifty. In the mulligan the other week? A hundred dollars.
Took a shot.
Hundred dollars. Shave, shave field. Thirty-five hundred. Ed Roach. Portman's Garage. Twelve hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so can I get a motion for R H L for eleven thousand?
No.
Can you open one?
Play a little more, sorry.
Try to give it to him in a minute.
Why they hold you in a minute?
Why they're so far apart?
Ooh, Christmas paper.
Franklin Gulick, forty-five hundred dollars. Now you can have a motion. R H L Companies Inc., Williams Road, Montrose, for eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Jim Greco, second by Christian Warren, for the two thousand and nine Chevy Tahoe, to go to R H L highest bidder, eleven thousand nine fifty. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Two thousand and seven Trailblazer. Charles Beamer, thirty-five hundred. Portman's Garage, fourteen hundred dollars. Franklin Gulick, twenty-five hundred and fourteen dollars.
I guess this is the one.
Motion to award to Charles Beamer, two thousand and seven Chevy Trailblazer, for thirty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
My question to Jim Greco, second by Christian Warren, to award the two thousand and seven Chevy Trailblazer to Charles Beamer, for the highest bidder, thirty-five hundred. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry.
Forklift. Got one bid. From Penn York Medical Supplies. Thirty-five hundred and two dollars. Motion to prove. For the Kamatsu Forklift, for thirty-five hundred and two dollars, to Penn York Medical Supplies.
Second.
My question to Jim Greco, second by Christian Warren, to approve the highest bidder, thirty-five oh two, to Penn York Medical Supplies. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have this one, which is the roll-off container.
It's a roll-off container, that's not listed on the agenda.
Yeah, same on there.
Wasn't it advertised?
It wasn't advertised, it's not listed on the agenda, because it was not...
Yeah, we didn't know where it was, it was a blank envelope.
Okay.
So, we can award it.
Uh, Freddy's Refuge. Freddy's Refuge, sold as is, one roll-off container, thirty-five, for a thousand and one dollar. Roll-off container, red, thirty-five cubic yards, twelve hundred and fifty-one dollars. Roll-off container, thirty-five cubic yards, twelve hundred and fifty-one dollars. Motion to approve the three bid prices to Freddy's Refuge removal.
Second.
My question to Jim Greco, second by Christian Warren, to approve Freddy's Refuge, as the highest and only bidder for the roll-off containers, three containers, a thousand and one for one, twelve fifty-one for the second one, twelve fifty-one for the third one. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The only thing that left that did not, we did not receive a bid on, was the concrete pipe that's lying down there. So, I'm asking for a motion to, uh, remove it as scrap, and get rid of it.
Motion to remove him as scrap.
Second.
My question to Jim Greco, second by Christian Warren, to remove the concrete pipes at the recycling center as scrap. All questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So carry. All right, now we're on to public comment.
Well, this is the easy one. In the, um, compensation schedule, if this is not a typo, and it's in the middle, it's tip staff court?
Right.
Is there such a position? Excuse my ignorance, could someone explain what tip staff is?
Yeah, they're, they're the ladies generally, they're the command, and usher the jurors in and out, answer questions, and all, run back and forth between the jurors and the judge. Yep, they're used every time we have a jury.
Okay.
They're here all day while the jury's here.
The tip staff is sixty dollars. What is the average salary of an employee for the county? Would it be sixty dollars a day?
That would be more than that.
The average county employee would make more than sixty dollars a day.
Right, the average county employee would, yes.
Motion to adjourn? More questions? Oh, you got more questions?
Um...
Well, let's get it first.
Bruce?
Okay, I have two, um, one probably would be harder than the other. I would like a comment from any of the commissioners on, um, what their, what their take is on the, the total holdup of anything going on in Harrisburg, and how it's affecting the county at this moment.
Probably glad to start, you can...
You don't want it from me, you better have something a little more politically correct.
You might make a better, better print.
Well, Bruce, they shot us up, they assaulted him, the three of them, what, he was at some meeting, and boy, read him the riot act, because when we complain about what they're doing down there, they don't like it.
Who's that?
Who's that? Well, I'll talk to the commissioner, he was, uh, it was him that was getting accosted.
Cab meeting in Nicholson, Representative Pickett and Representative Majors were there. But, you know, bottom line is, is that, you know, we're now past, you know, five months on this thing. And, uh, you know, what I am hearing was, uh, three days ago, or yesterday, when, or Monday, when I was in Harrisburg, uh, they were saying they were real close, hope to have something done by Thanksgiving. Then yesterday morning, we found out that everything went sideways, and, and nothing's gonna happen. And now I'm hearing that, you know, it looks positive, uh, and of course, with the governor's comments last night on TV, was that, you know, they're pushing to try and have something done next week. Huge impact on all the counties, um, you know, there, there's several counties that are in worse shape than us, like Luzern County. Uh, their children and youth departments are not even paying their providers. Unfortunately, we've, uh, through good fiscal management, uh, we've been able to do that. Um, you know, the risk there is, when you don't pay your providers, and at some point, providers say, see ya, don't bother calling me again. So, it's, uh, the area agency on aging, we've had to take and bail them out, as a county, to keep the elderly getting their meals, and getting their personal services, because the state's not lived up to their obligations. Uh, we did try to push back on the children and youth services back to the state, and said, well, if you're not gonna take and send us the, your eighty percent of the money, then we're not gonna take and provide the services. And they said, that's fine, we'll just provide the services ourselves, and we'll bill the counties for what we do then. So, um, you know, it's just ridiculous that it's gone five months. Um, you know, I always thought it was just the weathermen that could be wrong and still get paid, and, uh, and I did it right, but apparently I was wronged out to be the governor and everybody in Harrisburg.
You're not supposed to say that, they don't like to say that they're getting paid, remember?
Yes, I know.
Some counties have decided that they're not remitting their tax revenue to Harrisburg until, and they're using what they need, and putting the rest in escrow, until the governor comes to his senses. Um, why not, I mean, Luzern obviously has a problem, because they've always had a problem. Lack of one as well, so we don't even bother talking about them, they're taking out loans.
Right.
Um, and the fact of the matter is, is that if all the counties can do this, and run their, their governments while still assuring the fact that Harrisburg will eventually get its money, why don't we do the same thing, without having to borrow anything?
Right. Well, we're not in a position where we need to borrow anything. Uh, unfortunately, we do lose money in this process, because, uh, any type of investment income, we would get off our, our, uh, our money. We're losing, because we've had to use it to pay the state's obligations. Um, I did meet with several county commissioners on Monday, um, at the county commissioners' meeting, and, uh, the ones that are saying they are gonna do it, are working on trying to figure out a way to enact it legally, and to set up the accounts to do it, they haven't got it done yet. Um, at the county commissioners', uh, uh, conference, it was a unanimous vote by the county commissioners to take legal action against the governor, and the legislators for their negligence in their, and not getting the budget passed, as well as, uh, looking at the legal options to withhold that funding from the state. Uh, so that, we are working on that, and looking at those options now.
And you'll be all in if this goes through?
Well, we, I can't say we'll be all in, we'll need the cooperation from our other elected officials that are in the county, so it'll just be a question as to whether they'll, they'll do it. Now, unfortunately for us, we've got a bigger problem, and that is because we've had no sitting judge in this county for the last nine months, eight months, nine months, eleven months, whatever. Um, there's not a lot of warrants getting served, because there's no judge here. So, as far as receiving, um, the fines and restitution, and the dollars that come back into the county, and go to the state and to the county, uh, a lot has not been collected this year. So, um, you know, that's even a bigger problem. The bigger problem is, when you look at it, it's not just the budget, it's the incompetence of not being able to appoint a judge in this county, which has cost the taxpayers not only, uh, a lot of personal grief, because they couldn't get appointed as guardian, uh, grandparent guardians, uh, and, and adoptions, and all the other things that couldn't take place, uh, but also the issues with the wills, getting those processed, because there's no judge, um, but also because we, we have no judge, you know, there's a lot of revenue streams that, that do not happen. And unfortunately, it gets compounded, because, um, our district attorney, who's gonna become the next judge, is still working as the district attorney, or has been all year. So, all the cases he's been working on all year, he's gonna have to refuse himself next year as, from the bench. So, we'll have to pay somebody to come in from the outside to sit on those, and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
You're right.
So, that'll be another cost to somebody, that, of course, will be the taxpayers, and will cause more heartache and grief trying to get those things taken care of too. So, you, you kind of combine that all together, uh, with the mess that they've created in Harrisburg, and you tie that into the mess that they've created in Washington, D.C., and you tie that into this, uh, the nonsense that's going on about the, uh, the immigration, and, and whether we should allow, uh, the Syrians into the state, not allow them into the state. You know, we have been doing a horrible job vetting anybody coming into this country for the last ten years. I mean, bottom line is, you know, our intelligence agencies and our homeland security couldn't find their own butt with their own two hands. And the problem is, is, you know, what's been coming across the borders in Mexico? What's been coming across the borders from Canada? What's just been coming in off the, off the shores that nobody even knows about? And if anybody thinks that our government can vet anybody and do a good job at it, then, you know, listen, I think they're crazy. So, I think it's a huge problem. So, you tie all that together, yeah, we got a heck of a mess here.
You're gonna be in trouble again.
I know, I don't care.
So, Berks is withholding their real estate transfer tax, which is, you know...
But they haven't done anything with it yet. Right now, they got it. And most of those accounts are sweep accounts. So, when the register recorders, or the patonitaries office, those accounts are set up in the state, the state collections go into what they call a sweep account, and the state sweeps them. So, right now, they've got that one, he's sitting there, but the logistics of how to do it, and not to get themselves in a legal issue, is what they're trying to get worked out right now.
And the schools are withholding their charter school payments. A lot of the districts are sitting on those.
Sure. And what, and what happens theoretically in the past for the schools is what's always happened. When schools always bucked the system about paying the charter school money, the state said, fine, we'll just deduct it from what we're paying you.
Right.
So, you know, it works out that way. All?
Well, I think Chris should be thankful for getting their foot out of a state, for the roads in the area, for finishing up Montrose here publicly, though, because they didn't want to do it.
Well, you know, listen, you know, when you get to the roads, you know, yes, we had a great year this year in getting roads repaired. We got a lot of work done, but that's it, you're not gonna see it again. You know, we have the highest gas tax in the state, or in, in, in the country. Um, you know, they were looking at, trying to have the highest, uh, uh, sales tax, but I guess they've changed their mind on that now. But we have the highest gas tax, so that's a huge problem, and they're still telling me in three years, with the number of bridges that have to be replaced, there'll be no money in three years to work on roads, it'll just all be bridges.
And the other thing was, how's the recycling, like, improved or...
Well, no, with the prices scrapped down, that's a huge problem too. You know, right now, we're stockpiling everything.
I wonder where it's lot down there.
Yeah, we're stockpiling, we're not gonna give it away, so, um, you know, the commissioners are having it stockpiled until we can get the pricing for it, so we can, uh, get a return on that investment, instead of just giving it away. True?
Who's supposed to appoint the judge?
Well, it, well, it's an elected position, but in the year then, we have a situation like this, the governor, the governor could have appointed it, and, uh, had somebody appointed. We wrote numerous letters, uh, the commissioners wrote letters, everybody wrote letters, and it's, the answer was, we're not doing anything till we get the budget done.
So, that wasn't appointed, but we have Judge Siemens, right? He works part-time?
Well, Judge Siemens is retired, so there's only so much he does do here, and then he does the stuff outside the county too.
And then, what did they actually say to you, Majors and Pickett? How did they give you a hard time, when you complained about what's going on with the budget? What, how did they respond to you?
Well... And, well, they, uh, you know, were very upset with me, and, uh, said that...
Imagine that, being upset.
Said that, uh, my comments, and our comments here, were stating that they shouldn't be getting paid when everything shut down, uh, you know, we don't understand what it's all about, and, uh, you know, we should kind of stick to our county business, and not the state business, and... So, of course, I had my choice words back, so, those I won't repeat.
You know, the men that they serve, the pleasure of, you know...
Well, you know, here's my problem, you know, when we have no budget, and I'm telling, uh, and we're telling as commissioners, uh, area and agency, that, you know, okay, we're gonna bail you out once, but don't look for this to happen for the next year, because the state hasn't passed the budget. And then I go down to the senior center, and I see all the old people there, and I'm thinking, okay, how do we tell these people next month, that, listen, you're not gonna get your meals on wheels, you're not gonna be able to use your, your senior center, uh, and those that, few of you that are getting the personal, you know, someone to come in once a day to check on you, make sure you're still alive, or, or once a week to give you a bath, because you can't do it yourself, you're not gonna get those services anymore, because the state doesn't want to pass a budget. But yet, I go around, and I see the governor and the legislators all out getting photo ops, putting signs up, and going to functions, and getting your critters into bed. To me, it's real simple, you know, if you don't have your job done on time, you work twenty-four hours a day, do you get it done? Simple as that.
How about the hotel, bro, hotel builder, correct? Food and expenses? Three hundred thousand, the number they just got released?
Well, thank, I want to thank you for being strong with Pickett and Majors. Even though you got flak for it, I, I appreciate you being strong with them.
He came out of a shell, very...
Wait a minute, I didn't, I didn't come out beat up in that meeting, please.
Yeah, I'd like to add what you said about the vetting process. If everybody would go back to the beginning of the Obama administration, and our secretary of state, Bashar Assad was a golden boy. He was an enlightened, enlightened ruler, to at least, a dictator, not a ruler. Until he started barrel bombing the people that protested, and, and gassing them with chemical weapons. And then, when Mohammed, when Gaddafi was, uh, was, was, we came, we saw, he's dead, that unleashed a flood of refugees from Libya into Syria. Syrians themselves, there are millions that we can't account for, and they can't account for it, because A, we have no diplomatic relations, B, they have no system to do it, C, they're running from a war-torn country. We have, there is no way that we can vet any one of them, because they don't know who they are, and if, even if they did, they're not gonna tell us.
Wasn't it a month ago, at the White House, the Secret Service man, wasn't he the one that was doing some sexting on the phone, or doing something on the phone with underage kids, or something like that? And he's in the White House, they couldn't even vet, yeah? And he's in the White House, they couldn't even vet him?
So where does the county stand if Governor Wolf decides, well, Susskind County, your portion is, and find a place to put it?
Well, I think the governor's totally insane if he thinks that they can send people in here without vetting, or even thinking they can do a current vetting job.
They're gonna say they vet them, but what, what, you do, you did pass a proclamation against, um, having, uh, immigrants. Immigrants who don't belong here, what legal defense do we have? Because that is a frightening, that's a very frightening...
A legal defense? You know, I have one.
Right, we can...
I'm gonna tell you something, the governors really don't have a legal defense. Back in nineteen eighty, they passed an immigration act that put the power away from governors from saying you can't take immigrants. That's a federal law.
And here's the issue, so, we say, you know, we say, okay, we're gonna do this. So they'll just go in through Mexico or Canada, come across the borders there. I mean, our problem is not just this group, our problem is huge. The problem is the, the entire country's borders, that there is no, there is zero control. We like to think we live in a world that's, that's safe, and that, you know, our border patrols are, have got our back, and, and we're doing the right things, but, listen, they're not. You know, the problem is, is, people can come across anytime they want. And if Maryland says we're gonna take them, and Pennsylvania says we're not, well, they go to Maryland, get in the car, drive to Pennsylvania, how are you gonna stop them? You gotta, we'll have to set toll, loose up at the, all the roads and fences through the fields at the state border to try and stop them. I mean, I, you know, the, the thing is so huge, that they don't understand the problem themselves as to what they're, what they're doing. Because they have such a lax in, in the intelligence department in Washington DC, you know, we have all these problems. And they keep kicking the can down the road, saying, well, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it, we'll talk about it next month, we'll talk about it next month, we'll talk about it next month, and nothing has changed. Has anything changed on the borders between Mexico and the United States? Nothing.
If you'd like a little more bad news, the new premier of cannabis taking in ten thousand.
Well, there you go.
Bruce, what you wanna keep in mind, everybody needs to realize this, when these people in Washington, everybody says, we'll vet them. These people come, they have no birth certificate, we have no background on them. They can say they are whoever they wanna be, and we have no way to say, that's not who we are.
One of the ways that ISIS makes...
They're coming here with nothing.
One of the ways that ISIS makes a lot of revenue is in a forged document operation.
That's absolutely...
They can't vet them.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. I should get a good, have one.
Good job.